Yeah.
I think I've never had before.
Just a note, we are now recording the meeting now that we're in.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Rachel.
Sorry.
Hi, Rachel.
All right.
Buddy, I apologize.
And in terms of the minutes on the agenda, which I assume.
Your screen a little bit because we can't see your face.
Which way?
We only see the top of your head.
Yes.
Oh, Rach.
That's better. Stop. That's good.
Andy, minutes? Yeah?
Minutes. I haven't had a chance to transcribe them. Things are crazy. I have two recordings. I just need to get to them.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay.
For getting.
We're, I mean, we could just put the recordings up. I mean, that's, it's just that they're not 508 compliant without
Right.
transcription and closed caption.
You could just transcribe them. I don't know. Yeah.
I mean, I haven't looked at how much, I can't remember how much it costs to do the transcription, but I'll let you know.
Okay.
It is a cost.
Okay. Yeah, let us, let us know how much. Um, Rachel, do you want to give us your report about what you two have been up to and tell us what you need, if anything?
Um, we are poised to kind of iron out a reopening plan. Um, I guess our biggest biggest step that we're taking next is to have Brad come in next week and share the work time. And we're going to kind of quietly phase back in, our plan is, and for discussion with you all today, to phase in pickups of books. And, you know, I talked round and round with Brad about it and, you know, he helped me. I agree with him that it's wiser to prop the vestibule door open and expect people to be wearing masks when they enter that way, um, to pick their books up.
Pick their books up in the vestibule?
Yeah.
But not come into the library?
Correct. Anytime soon.
Right. This is the plan that we had, that we talked about a couple of months ago.
Yes, it is. And over this interval of a month, um, yeah, there's been a continued tsunami of email discussions and Zoom meetings with area librarians, plus I've been attending continuing ed events around it and otherwise usually recorded. But getting back to the particulars for next week, it's just hard to know where to begin, but we want to reinstate making books available from our library.
Right. It's getting expensive buying every book I want to read.
Yes, indeed. Just know, though, that the books you want to read would have to be taken from our, our very own library. Some of it is going to delve earlier in time than the brand new things. But as, you know, if and as I get delivery, I'm, I'm ordering books to try to skid into the end of the fiscal year. I have not seen the town warrant. I don't know if any of you have.
No.
I don't know if it's, I guess it won't be disseminated. When you, when it's disseminated to townsfolk, you will know, but I won't because I don't live in the town.
I saw something, so I know that Andy and I are both on the ballot.
Oh, I mean, automatically? We didn't have to?
Right. I didn't know, but I got something. I opened up something on the email and I'm up for one year. You're up for three.
Hey there, you're like Flint.
Without even doing anything or having gotten a call from the town or, you know, I was on the planning board for five years. I ran for reelection twice. And I always had to go in and sign something that I, you know, to tell Ronnie Barrett that I wanted to run for reelection.
Well, they canceled, yeah, they canceled the caucus. It's, it's a caucus. Go in and somebody, you know, you go in and.
Yeah. We're running unopposed, so assuming if we vote for ourselves, we're probably okay.
When is the election? Does anybody know?
No.
End of June. End of June?
Yeah, June 22nd or maybe that was a town meeting.
It's on the warrant box down the hill for me, so that's.
Yeah.
All right. So it's just local stuff, the June election?
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's just the town.
School budget.
Yeah.
Uh, that stuff, which I don't know what, you know, what we're going to do with that.
Right.
So Rachel, in terms of opening the vestibule, what's your target date?
Well, I already told the friends, as a outcome of meetings with local librarians via Zoom, I learned several things. One is that an old friend of mine is the director at Beckett and she has been doing curbside delivery all this while. Only one staff member is in the building. I don't know what their hours are, but that person is a retiree or transplant from a medical professional career and they're very well suited to wiping books down. They've got perfect protocols. So they, she agreed with that staff member to be the one to do it. So they've continued it. And that's not what the state library commission suggested. There was a big uproar among librarians and so I went along with that for that reason. And also when the town offices closed, I thought, if this picks up, it might be problematic for us to be having people, if, if we get more traffic with it, the town might shut us down. So I thought, let me just comply as best I can with the town. However, keeping people only in the vestibule should still be all right with them.
And what?
Governor Baker's island on libraries?
Disney?
Is Governor Baker silent on libraries?
Yes, and library, you know, our commission has done its best to send some points to them and hope that libraries are specifically named by phase when he speaks on Monday. That being said, my, yeah, go ahead.
What date do you think?
Well, yeah, so I'm sorry. I met with the friends yesterday on their Zoom meeting and I said that we would aim for Monday next week, in fact, but obviously we're not open on Monday. Brad is going to take his shift on Tuesday mornings. And eventually he'll change over to working an eight hour day on a Tuesday. And that'll be, so he'll do that for his hours weekly on days when he's here. So we're staying extremely cautious. We're going to make a bleach solution each day in a basin in the sink. And anything he brings in from the book drop, we will, he or I will spray and put on the return cart. Anything that comes back from a patron to the vestibule likewise, we'll make sure there's plenty of signage informing patrons to be in charge, to self-regulate how and to what degree they disinfect or quarantine items they take away from us.
That's a very small room, so if you can keep the windows cracked, that would be great weather permitting. It's like when I go into the Husatonic Post Office, that is the most dangerous place I go. Hundreds of people in and out. People wear masks, but they stand two feet away from you. So I'm really looking at these small spaces. So if you can ventilate, that's great.
In fact, yes. Our plan is to instruct, one of the instructions to people besides wearing a mask, so they don't leave airborne particles in there will be, don't come in if another patron is in picking up a book. We don't have to be like the post office. So we're too worried about that size of space.
Great. Thank you. Request books the way they always do, online?
Yes, they can call, they can send us an email, or they can request it the usual way. So we will look at the holds list, but we can't, we're not permitted to fill anything from other libraries until we're told by the regional system.
Did you order Weather by Jenny Offill?
Not yet, but I will.
Oh, good. Buy it.
So Rachel, the, what does that mean for the books that were already came through CWLRs?
Okay.
Are they overdue? Do I, like, do I have to take out a loan?
Nothing is overdue. Everything has been amnestied, Andy. Or should I say Andy steed?
I'm shocked to say that the books I took out before, two of them I haven't read yet.
I know.
It's been two months, but, you know, we're all busy. I don't know.
I think it, I think that's, that's spelled two-year-old.
Three-year-old.
Three-year-old in your house.
Next week. That's true.
I, yeah, see, I was right. He's two.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Rachel, anything else you need or Brad?
I want also to, go ahead, Brad.
Well, I was just, Rachel and I have been talking and when we're talking about reopening, we, we have thought that it would be good to do it, uh, open the same time that Rich, the Richmond Library opens. But we have also thought that it would be best if we opened when one of the bigger libraries opened at Lenox or Stockbridge or Pittsfield or even down in Barrington, because if they don't open, we might get more traffic than we can.
Do you think big opening or vestibule opening?
Vestibule opening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. That was voiced.
That's a good point.
Yes, and.
No rush.
Yeah, the, the area librarians from larger libraries during the Zoom meeting brought that point up in reverse, that it might create confusion for their users to come to us and how is that going to work? So we won't be broadcasting it until we see them opening. There is a, um, there's a document created by the library commission that people are filling out, but I have not seen anyone except Stockbridge. Well, Stockbridge has gone up on that and so has I think Beckett, which I told you about. But Stockbridge being large, her openings are even the limited curbside is TBD. And that's why we're kind of diverging from that. And we don't want patrons from neighboring towns to take our stuff away and not have it due till July 1st because it's a brand new book and someone drives over from Pittsfield because they're not opening. I know that Pittsfield is not opening. So again, we need to be cautious and I'm doing that most closely in concert with Kristin at Richmond.
Right.
What do we need? I'm buying the things because I'm, I've not heard from the town board of health and some towns are being heavily, some libraries are being heavily micromanaged by their boards of health and and their town boards, but we are not, which is kind of a nice. And that's kind of a nice thing about this town, you know, we are trusted to be responsible. If that's the reason, we can read it that way or could be the town is that laid back. That's good in my book as well. I believe that I and with you can be responsible. So I'm very happy with that arrangement. But I have low hopes that the town will provide us with masks, gloves, bleach, plexiglass. What we do is pretty risky. That's why I have no intention of opening to the public.
Yeah.
Right away.
Yeah. That sounds good to me.
Yeah, zero contact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Have people, have people been calling you?
I've been able to keep a tally, not quite on one hand, um, maybe all, all digits. It's been only about twenty, about thirty requests in the days we've been closed by phone. And then I've got an email folder. I don't know the amount, but not too many.
Great.
That's more than I would have thought, so.
So at regular intervals, people are asking for things and I think that's a hopeful sign for our people needing us to begin services if we can. The friends very wonderfully and spontaneously offered to do something that I had read in an email other friends groups were doing, which was calling patrons who might not be online and helping them set up borrowing. So that was lovely of them yesterday.
Anything else from them that we should know or, you know, that you want to communicate to us?
They have officially canceled their summer book sale, so they won't be taking any donations. And the other thing is they are going to decide whether to purchase the outstanding, but still, the currently outstanding museum passes that we have. Some feel, as the friends group, we want to support them. Because if things open, um, it would be great to have the passes ready to go. So I have some, but not all. That's it for them.
What happened there? I told Carol I wanted to come to their meeting and then I never got a Zoom invitation. So are they meeting Mondays or Wednesdays?
It's usually been a Wednesday from my experience.
Okay. I think Carol made a mistake. She told me Monday, but anyway. So the next, do you have, offhand, do you know when the next one is? Is it the second Wednesday?
I am not sure.
I asked her and she told me, but she told me Monday and that doesn't make any sense. So.
I'm going to check. I don't know if they said it or not.
Okay. So, um, let's move on to finances, our favorite topic. Beth and I have been working on this.
I sent everybody an email, which you may or may not have seen, um, because I just, I sent it about an hour ago.
Okay. I just wanted to back up. I want to.
Here it is. It's called Follow the Money. So what I've been doing.
Wait, timeout. I just want to back up a little bit.
Yeah, okay, sure.
I, because I spoke to Lucy Prashker, the attorney, just to say, we're thinking of creating a new nonprofit. I kind of laid out what the context was. She said it was critical for me to find out
Right.
two things. One was, was Friends of the Library a 501(c)(3)? I assured her it was, but she could not find it on the state attorney's database. So I asked Carol and Carol told me the exact wording. So maybe Lucy was not searching under the exact wording, which is Friends of the West Stockbridge Library. She also asked me to find out the source of the original money so that we could determine how it was earmarked, was it restricted? Did people think they were getting a tax donation? We needed to know everything about that original money, which is why Beth went on this detective search to trace, and I cannot believe she did it, to kind of trace from the beginning where this money came from.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry. Of course, that comes first. I was putting the horse, the cart before the horse, as they used to say. Anyway, so what I did basically was I went into the library, I, and I searched through the files and I took binders that I thought, um, you know, would be useful. And so what I found out was very interesting, but, um, also there are still little details hanging out there and some of them are not so little. But what I found out was that the original, I found a file called Trust. You know, if anybody looks at the attachment to the email I sent, you'll see that. And basically, uh, in 1991, what this taught me was if you put, if you invest money, it grows if you don't touch it. So in 1991, this nice man, Walter Wilson, died. And he left a, a large estate with a lot of people that he was leaving money, a lot of legatees. And he named five libraries, Chatham, Pittsfield, Stockbridge, maybe only four, and us, not great guarantee, and us as residual legatees, which meant that after all the other money was given away, whatever was left would be split up between us. In the end, so there was an original, um, donation and, and the wording in his will, which I have, is the West Stockbridge Public Library. So it's not the town. It is the public library in West Stockbridge. That was his intention, to give the money to the library itself. And, um, so there was original $20,000 that came to the library and in 1992, and the following year, when his estate was finally closed after being in probate and everything, there was an additional $20,000. So there was $40,000 that came to the library. I was able to, uh, kind of follow that money and see it went in, in $10,000 increments, uh, it got invested in different places. And there were a bunch of people who were involved. One of them is June Biggs. She's been involved right along and the money has moved from, to different, you know, there've been a bunch of different CDs and, but anyway, the money grew from that original $40,000 with a few, you know, Berkshire Bank gave $1,000 at one time, somebody else gave 1,500. The mystery that I have not been able to resolve is the Lewine Trust, the John L. Lewine Trust. And somewhere in the early 2000s, that appeared. I can't find where that came from. It went into a CD, I think. Anyway, the money grew and grew and grew and didn't get spent. It was, you know, moved around to different companies, uh, that, you know, like a mirror prize had the money for a while and then somebody else. And it ended up in 2013, all of it ended up in a money market account. And at that point, there was $132,000. Some of that was donations, I think, um, in expectation of the library adding on the vestibule. And then, uh, so that was that. So the money, as far as I can tell, most of the money goes back to Walter Wilson. That money, you know, grew enormously because it was never touched. And that $40,000, I think, grew to be $82,000, more or less, over time. And then I do have a very, a kind of sketchy report of how in the end, in 2014, the money, uh, had all come together into a money market account. And I think it was Sue Coxon's group. She was the treasurer, I think, at the point, at this point, um, uh, opened an account of $125,000 with Edward Jones. And that account lasted till 2016, when all the money ended up back in a money market account. And then it started being spent on the vestibule. And in the end, we have in that same money market account about $45,000. I, I haven't seen, you know, in the last couple of months, any, um, you know, bank statement. So I'm not sure, but it's, Rachel, do you know exactly how much it is? I don't know.
You know, I wrote to June Biggs because Sue, I had a conversation with Sue Coxon and she was the one who told me, oh, we didn't raise that money. It was a bequest. We got that money. I had thought all this time that Sue Coxon's board have raised the money for the vestibule, but no.
No, I have, I have a record of the money that was raised for the vestibule. It's $12,000 or something.
I wrote to June Biggs and thought, gee, you were there so long, you could probably help me. No answer. I got absolutely none.
Well, she's the signator on a lot of these CDs and so she's very heavily involved.
So Beth and I thought, at this point, we should write a letter to the selectmen and say, Beth is willing to do the first draft and I'll look at it and Andy, you will do the next draft if you want. I mean, you should actually. And just say, it is our intention to establish a new 501(c)(3) on behalf of the library funded with the monies that were bequeathed to the library. Anything else about that letter, Beth?
No, except that, you know, along the way, I have found, there's a federal tax ID number. There's a Massachusetts exempt number, which maybe Rachel uses. I don't know. Um, no.
Really?
And, well, because I found all these tax documents. So, um, I don't know, the federal tax ID number, I don't know if it matches the town's federal tax ID number.
We need to figure that out.
Right.
Because.
I have the number. I mean, I have it written down, obviously.
Yeah, we need some help. So I don't know if we should, I, what do you all think? I don't know if we should draft that letter and submit it to the board and then get Lucy's help. Actually establish. Or we should take everything we know, present it to Lucy and then see what happens. Cause there are some things that we don't know. For example, if that tax number is the town's, the money belongs to the town, even though it can't be used for anything else other than.
And that could be it. It could be, it's a town fund that has a specific
Right.
area that where it can be used and it can't be used for anything.
Essentially what.
I think, I think my choice would be to take it all to Lucy, resolve it all before any letter goes to the, you know, goes to that crowd.
Crowd.
I'm just guessing.
Yeah.
It may be, the money technically belongs to the town, but they can only send it on the library and they therefore would be quite willing to let us go off on our own because they can't stand dealing with our finances. Anyway, which is what the treasurer told me. So and if we do take it to Lucy and say, here's everything we know, how do we do this? How, how do we actually do that? I mean, that's a meeting, right?
Which part?
Well, if we, if we, you, you, you have a little more work to do, you said, but if we then gather everything we know, take it to Lucy, tell her that this is what we'd like to do and ask her help in proceeding. Is that a meeting the three of us can have with Lucy?
Well, it's possible we could look at it, but it's possible we could also take that one into executive session because if we're conferring with council, that, that might be an executive. Uh, conferring with coun, council, that, that might be an executive session.
Meaning a session that doesn't have to be open.
Exact.
Oh, that sounds good.
Anytime you're talking about litigation or legal issues, I would have to, I mean, you'd wanna take a look at the open meetings law. In particular, what the requirements are through mass general law regarding a uh, executive session. What you do, what you do is you, you go into, to convene an executive session. You go into a regular session, open, public, and then you announce. That you're going into executive session and then you do a roll call vote of the voting members of the body. And once that passes, then you invite everybody who's not a member of that body to leave.
Right, okay, yes, I've seen the selectmen do that.
Yeah, we do it in the school committee all the time, negotiations, you know, contract negotiations with the union. Uh, uh, legal issues where we're being sued, um, stuff like that, you know, where, and then we'll have counsel actually in the meeting. In the executive session with us.
Right, okay. So Beth, it sounds like there's a few more things you'd like to do before.
Well, I would like to figure out who, what this Lewine thing is, because I'm really curious now, because I don't see any deposits anywhere. That create that trust. I don't, I don't see anything.
When did that start appearing?
Um, I can tell you, of course, in my copious notes, um. Uh, ba, 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 ba. Talk among yourselves, I'll find it in a second.
Because I bet you Jude Biggs knows the answer to that.
Oh, yeah.
Do you wanna contact her? Maybe you'll get a better response than I did.
Uh, I don't mind contacting her, sure.
Okay, because I, Sue Coxon said she was on the board for years and years.
Oh, yeah, no, I've been, I mean, at one point, all of the um. The bank statements were going to the tax collector of the town, otherwise known as June Biggs. And some, and, and for a while, it was going to Town of West Stockbridge, June Biggs. Then it was just going to Town, it always said Town of West Stockbridge Public Library. Then Town of West Stockbridge Lewine Trust. And it, you know, the name changed maybe, you know, since nineteen ninety-six. Maybe four times, four or five times, uh, the name of the account, or at least who it was being sent to was, was changed. But also, you know, there are records of the CDs and she's on every, you know, I, I'm not saying that, there's nothing nefarious here.
No, no.
But I mean, there's a lot of knowledge, I would think.
Okay.
And I, I've known her, you know, ever since our kids were little, but we're not, you know, we're not friends or anything.
So how does this sound?
I, I'd be happy to call her and see if she can.
Put as much of the puzzle together as you can.
Yeah, right.
And then I told Lucy I'd get back to her. I don't want her to think I'm a complete dolt. But I don't wanna get back to her until we're a little bit buttoned up about this.
Well, maybe we invite her to a, a meeting next month.
Yeah.
And hopefully have everything together and figure out, you know, whether we go into executive session or not, just.
I think we should, yeah.
Well, if it's, if, if it's legal.
It's open, so you know, the, you know, the, so everybody knows what we're, you know, what we're thinking.
Well, we're not sneaking.
Thinking is public.
Right.
Um, I, I, I have to say that, um, you know, Lucy has a great reputation. I think she'd be terrific. Um, and I talked to another friend of mine who's a lawyer, who said, who's been on lots of different boards, including school committees. And, and he said, you know, you might be better off starting out in a friend, you know, just kind of tiptoeing into the waters with the selectmen. And then uh, they may just say yes, and then you don't have to, you know, worry and then you go to Lucy. Or, you know, get Lucy to write a letter, then you're getting a lawyer letter and sometimes people can write that.
And still have the letter come from us.
Yeah.
The physical, actual letter we send, the first letter?
Yeah.
We can get her advice and still have the, have it be a friendly letter from us.
Yeah. Yes.
Smart thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then, hmm, I guess I'll just tell her where we are.
Yeah.
Uh, briefly, and.
Andy, what do you think? And what do you think, you know, what are your druthers about this?
Oh, I said, I think that we should get as much information on the table that we can share with Lucy.
Okay.
Have her, have her come to the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, hopefully we have like a way forward.
Right.
Coming out of that.
Because there are things, it would be nice to spend money on.
Yeah.
But, you know, as Beth, Beth raised the issue, wow, we really need to know what we're doing before we're spending money.
June's a really wonderful month.
So why don't we do that? If, if you can reach June and if you can get more information. Um, then we can proceed and have Lucy at our next meeting.
Mm-hmm, and June is the name of the month, so I mean, you know.
It's all, yeah, it all comes down to June somehow, it's all.
Busting out all over, as we all know. So, uh. Okay, I'm gonna, so my, um. I'm gonna get in touch with June and see if I can, because really, there's one, just one thing really hanging out there, which is the, a big thing. The Lewine Trust, why, you know, I don't understand, since Walter Wilson gave most of the money. Uh, why is, and, and he gave it in honor of Fanny Sher Wilson, his wife who had predeceased him. So I don't understand the Lewise Trust, Lewine Trust thing, unless he gave a great deal of money and I can't find where that is.
One thing we actually need, we absolutely need expert help in.
Yeah.
There's some tax number. And tax benefit, and the tax benefit was given by the town. It's a little messy. And that's where we need Lucy's help, I think.
Yeah, well, it's definitely a little messy, uh, or unclear at least.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a month to sort of pull it together.
Hi, Rachel, what is that? What does it say?
I, I have the, the totals for the April thirtieth statement.
Yeah.
Um. The municipal now account is thirteen, one forty-four, eighty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And municipal money market is forty-seven thousand fifty-two dollars and fifty-four cents.
Yeah, so the, the now account, that sounds high, thirteen thousand. You're not spending any money.
And that includes, by the way, the close to five thousand, that was a. Additional gift from the Walter Wilson Fund.
Yeah, and that should not be in that account. It should be in the other account, but okay.
So, yeah.
We figured this out, really, we throw somewhere else.
Yeah, because anything that's a donation should not be in the account that's the rolling account for, um. You know, running the library. It should be in the, a separate account, but, okay.
Yeah, so, you know, when you all.
Figure it out.
Move it, then.
A thousand dollars back.
I know backwards, but since we wanna get Lucy at our next meeting. Uh, can we select maybe two dates for our next meeting so that I don't go back and forth in case she can't?
I, I, I think I'll still be home.
Oh, I would definitely still be home. I'm gonna be home all summer.
Yeah.
I mean, if someone says, go out and party, no thanks.
Andy, you going to England or anything like that?
No, I'm, actually, I'm, I'm quite enjoying the property here on High Street.
Uh-huh.
And I have contractors in, hopefully by middle to late June, my new office in the top of the barn should be all done.
I wasn't done, plus I drove by this week. That's awesome.
Yeah, I'm, I, I decided that I, I had to get out of my little office in the attic, so I'm doing the entire upstairs of the barn.
Did someone design it for you?
No, that's me. I'm the general contractor.
I know this is off topic, but what contractors are you using?
I'm just, I'm using folks I know from the village.
Okay, we'll talk about that offline. That's.
But I wanna know where you, where you, um, where you live on High Street, because I drive on High Street every day.
I'm on, at thirty-four. It's the White House with the round porch.
Oh, that's your house. I love that house. Yeah, love that house.
Yeah, that's my house.
What flag is?
Flag's flying, yes. I take a, paint a flag once a week.
Yeah, oh, no, oh, that's great. That's great to know. I've always wondered who lived in that house.
Beautiful house.
Yeah.
Not with me. It's Julia and Cedar, too.
Right.
What flag is that?
Uh, the one I have right now is Greenland. I'm about to put up, uh, tomorrow, I'll probably be putting up the Bangladesh flag. And then it's Sweden the week after that.
Okay, so two dates. Would you all like to give me two proposed dates for when we meet?
Just looking at the calendar, let's see.
Five P M, maybe that's good for her. We'll have to see.
She's probably around to, she, it depends what, um, you know, Baker says, whether he's allowing law offices to open or not.
Juneteenth or June twenty-sixth?
June nineteenth or June twenty-sixth? Fine with me.
Why don't we give her those two? Well, actually, uh, my daughter-in-law is due to give birth around that time, so I'll be there unless. I manage to take myself to Brooklyn with a mask on to meet my new, new grandchild.
Which one, the first one or the second one?
Second grandchild, same parents and her due date is the thirteenth, so.
Oh, all right. Okay, yeah, you have to be there for sure.
I mean, they're here right now, but they're gonna go back to Brooklyn to have a baby.
Okay, well, I'll propose those dates and.
Yeah, and if I can't be there.
We'll change it, yeah.
Yeah, we'll figure that, we'll.
All this info.
Yeah.
Okay, so my, my, the only other thing on the agenda is I heard the market was going to open. In a careful, safe way, the outdoor farmer's market.
But it's not, but they're gonna open only for farmers, no, nothing else. It's, it's food and it's not prepared food. It's just vegetables and raw stuff from animals. There's, it's, they, it's a very limited, very limited market.
How they gonna do it? I mean, I heard about one market where you drive by and the farmer puts the stuff in your car.
I, I don't know. I, I, I thought it was gonna be, I thought I heard it was gonna be appointments. But you make an appointment, a reservation might be a better word.
Very weird.
Well, we're in a weird time, Jane.
No, but I mean, I can't see how that would be good for business.
Doing the best.
Your time has, has demonstrably not been good for business.
I love the idea of a market where people drive by in their cars, they say what they want and the farmer puts it in the back of the car and no contact.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, but no, they're not gonna have, they're not gonna have any stalls or of anybody doing anything but. Farmers. It's just their farmers they're trying to support.
All right.
I think it's the same.
They don't want people hanging around.
Same thing's going on tomorrow in Great Barrington. The Great Barrington Farmer's Market is opening tomorrow.
But you have to.
Yeah, there's no, I don't know how they're handling the crowd. I didn't really read it, because I wasn't planning to go. But I know it's, I'm pretty sure it's only food, only farmers.
It is only food. I read about it in The Edge. Um, it's only food and a lot, you know, I mean. It's usually overrun with people. There isn't gonna be any fresh food. There's only food to go. Like, you can't get a breakfast sandwich that you could get there or coffee.
You know, farmer's market's supposed to be, but, you know.
Yeah, right, exactly. They're going back to the basics.
Andy, where are you getting your food from these days?
Taft, Sean Stanton, uh, you know, roadside egg stands.
I hear.
And the garden is starting to provide, too. I mean, you know, rhubarbs.
Makes a garden, yeah.
Rhubarb's coming in, the lattice is starting to come out. We've been harvesting asparagus. Radishes, let's not forget the radishes.
Oh, God, that's great. How do you protect your garden from animals?
I have hoops on some stuff, but, you know, I, I spend a lot of time scaring the hell out of, uh, you know, groundhogs.
We have some fat groundhogs.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta deal with the groundhogs before you have a garden.
Yeah. All right, well, does anybody have any other things they wanna confess to or talk about?
Well, this has been great.
I move that we adjourn.
I, 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 well, first I have to say, I changed my background. I'm now in Stockholm.
Oh, how do you do that?
Uh, I just go into Zoom.
Be careful, because they're getting a lot of cases in.
I, this is my favorite, right back here, this is my favorite library in the world, actually. I love that library.
Wouldn't, that just.
Stockholm Public Library.
Love libraries.
I, I have a gallery of libraries that I've downloaded into my Zoom preferences and I just pull up a library.
Okay, you, I, I have to go have dinner with my family, so I'm gonna go, but I love the way that library looks and someday I'd love to go to Stockholm.
I second, I second your motion.
Okay.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. I will confirm which of those dates is gonna work.
And let us know, right. Great, take care, everybody. Great to see you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.